Where are you sitting at in Arizona?
I just just now was able to hear you. This is uh. Lake Skinner and out of Temecula, California.
Oh, sorry, I have us muted.
This is where we've been for the past six weeks. With this beautiful background.
Yeah. Very nice. Are you there with the group like you did last year or Alaska?
Uh, no, this is we're setting up um the balloon and wine festival. And this is the fortieth year of the event. So we've been setting up close to seven thousand feet of fence. Over two hundred toilets. Uh, two hundred tents. And we're not done. And the festival starts Friday afternoon.
Oh, wow.
And our head our headliner Saturday night is Brad Paisley.
Oh, nice.
And Sarah Evans, REO Speedwagon, Colt Ford. Um, I forgot all the rest of them.
So who's sharing missing the bike spare? He can share from there. Do you want the speaker? Can you guys hear him? Okay.
Yeah.
Is this TV not telling me?
The sun is starting to move. I might have to move it a little bit. There.
So since Alan is not here, do you mind sharing it?
No, I don't have anything in front of me to share, but I'll bring the meeting to order on whatever date this is.
The retired life.
Well, I haven't had a watch on or my phone with me. For six weeks, so.
Wow. So we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
Okay, I'll rise.
Yeah.
I can't rise where I am sitting.
You don't have fourth on.
I say I can't stand because I'm sitting at a park at a picking bench.
Oh, sure. So the next something I didn't know, I was helped guide you is the approval of the March twenty first, twenty twenty three regular meeting of minutes.
Okay, let's see if I can. Has everybody read the minutes? You might have any questions about the minutes?
No question.
They have first and second.
Um, Commissioner Maloney?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoxsey?
Yes.
Commissioner Sarnowski?
Yes.
Jared Davidson?
Yes.
What?
I was looking to see if I could find the. The agenda that you sent me.
The next is. The workshop portion talking about the RV survey results.
Right, okay. So. Is everybody? Everybody else has a copy of it, right?
Yeah, and that's what I sent you this morning.
But I'm looking at on my phone right now.
Oh, so we kept the agenda title a little vague. So you guys didn't get them farted with all the questions and whatever until after the open house. So this is kind of in preparation. To give you guys kind of what has been out there so far. And then next week we'll have the open house and then we'll come back to you guys in June. And to kind of have that public workshop to give the opportunity for additional input, but for the discussion and recommendation to city council.
So, um, Norm, I'm gonna share my screen so you'll be able to see.
Okay. There we go.
So can you so um. In your packet tonight, you kind of have the survey results. What it is is a summary. That includes the total number of people that did a survey. Um, yes, no, how they answer the questions. A lot of things on there. You had an option. Did you guys take the survey?
I did.
Oh. Yeah.
No.
So some of them had the other. And so what I didn't print because otherwise you see on the first one, there's sixty two others. A lot of them just said no, but they want to say no way in this town or. Um, so we have a total of six hundred forty seven responses via the survey. Eight, well, then actually nine, technically ten. Two came in today, um, just in their opposition. And she called and I said, please send me something writing. So we have ten um written responses that people either they've just submitted their card back saying no. So with that, we have the hundred twenty four yeses or so save. Four hundred and seventy knows and sixty two. What?
Are you showing on your graph that you have on your screen? I'm I'm only seeing just the yellow.
Yeah, so that's the others because what we were just I was just so you guys can see. I was going to let you so you kind of have in your mind what the community is saying. I wanted to go over kind of the others. I mean, yes, you have the knows, but kind of what's the reasoning? What are they saying? Um. And that's what I mean, I couldn't print sixty two and then another question will have a whole bunch more. So just to kind of roughly go through them. Can you guys? Read them all or I can read them. Um. Some is kind of like the first one that's listed there and doesn't area with a posted adult. Some things, I mean, obviously, if we were to go through and get the recommendation to amend our development code to allow reselling an RV on private property. Some things obviously is out of our control or. I mean, we can't say there's going to be an adult.
What what was the purpose of this though? Was it for to did somebody want to park an RV like family on their property? Or is this because we have a lot of homeless people just parking randomly all over town?
Politically correct, homeless aside. Homelessness is a completely separate issue. This is strictly RV. So in December. Yes, it was brought up a council um that we should just change our code and allow RVs. And that brought up. So then city staff was tasked to do some research because right now development code is absolutely no.
Right.
Not even if you're building a house, not even technically be a family coming. Um, it's just no. So we were tasked to do research. We came back to February twenty twenty three. His council gave them research. Um, we polled all the other cities, municipalities in Davis County, plus some that people had found doing some Google search that. Allowed it may not allowed it, what their process is. Brought that information back to council. Um, so that kind of spearheaded, let's get a survey. What's the community want? I mean, obviously, some communities. Or areas of our community, you live in APD or some region that has strict homeowners associations. So obviously you live there for a reason. Where um we wanted to see what the community. As a whole. Wants to see. Do you want to see change? Do you want to allow it? If so, do you want it to be an application? Do you want to be awake? Do you? You know? And so that's where we kind of came up with just a few what we thought simple questions.
I just wasn't sure what the.
To kick off. Well, so using the South Calipoya, that property that has the three RVs on it, it's out there for everyone to see. That's where a lot of uh the complaints that we've heard and the council members have heard because. They're nice. They're nice homes, but there's a lot of them. And so they're parking them. It's clear that they're living in them. And what the situations are, you know, where it wasn't permitted, starting with the letter and. They weren't the only ones, but having the multiple where some of them have them in their backyard and most of us would never even know they're there. Um, there's a lot of variety of scenarios, but when you get those complaints, we were. Our compliance officer was directed to kind of step back as soon as the fires and. Um, so again, and then, you know, the different situations, COVID, the things that we've been through over the years, it's not necessarily. Homeless, but maybe they lost their house to a fire or something. So it was. Hold on, let's reevaluate and then.
I know the Rock Creek people went through a lot of fights.
Yeah, and see that's where Springfield. They put it temporarily during their fires that you could allow. Well, then they went through and amended it. Okay. We saw how this worked. Um, we allowed it during fires. Now COVID, well, let's put it into play. They have a pretty strict. Set of guidelines, but again, it's temporary. Like they only enacted it, I think, December of last year, and they're already mid this year reviewing it and maybe kicking it out. Um, so. I mean, some of the others. You know, obviously, people, the homeless, that was kind of a contentious, I guess, topic, kind of came up in the middle of this. We're trying to keep them separate, but. Some people put them together. You know, the yes on private property. Well, this survey was for just private property, so that technically should be a yes. Um. But in an encampment. That be like. An RV park?
No.
Huh?
An encampment wouldn't be, but it would be. The encampment is almost an illegal park.
Gotcha. Like an illegal, like bunch of them or something?
I think so.
Um. And then a trailer park, well. And that's another um kind of thing to differentiate. We have approved RV parks. You can live or stay in the approved RV park. Some of the approved manufactured home parks have a set amount of approved RV spaces as well. So this. Didn't pertain to that. Those were already approved.
And the laws have changed. So if you have an RV and you want to permanently place it in a manufactured home park, you can. We can't stop you from that. You just have criteria for the building code of setting it on the foundation and whatever um that have to also be met.
You know, having a parking lot that's just for pacing the village. Well, that's, you know, question number two gets into what kind of zone. Um. Because like Springfield, if it's a church. Property or you have an industrial commercial business with a parking lot, maybe you have up to three. They still put a cap on it.
Look at it at that point. How many Hastings villages are we going to have scattered all through town?
That's the one.
I mean. If we have to pave a spot to put RVs in, it's not going to be right next door. It's going to have to be somewhere else in town.
Well, and the same thing is, you know, when you're building a house or something, we have design criteria for your parking. So you're gonna tell me that everyone that wants an RV is gonna want to pave that spot too?
Yeah. Well, I'm just mentioning you're gonna have to have hookups. You're gonna have to have sewer hookups and power hookups because a million extension cords spread across the grass field is a bad idea.
Yes.
I. My my main concern. Since this gets. Allowed in some way, you know, people put them on their property and rent them out.
Well, and so going back to the infrastructure, the the toll it's going to take on our water plants and our sewer plant and the um. The building official has concerns with like the electrical component to what your house has. And how much these RVs utilize. And so using the. Calipoya one, if they have three RVs connected and it's only a two hundred amp service, there's a hundred and fifty of the two hundred. So it doesn't mean a lot for the house to run on.
All have to all have to be permitted. And in the permit, it would work out what it has to have available, which means that if it's not a residential piece of property. They may have to go to a second service for the RV.
Which taking so adding the system development charges for that connection. And if they're living in the RV because. Why are they gonna want to pay the system development charges? Because usually, you know, you're not living in an RV on someone's property because you're building the house.
Well, aren't the system development charges technically for like a permanent? Structure?
They are, but at the same time, it's another idea that you have to think about.
Yeah.
Those same family.
But that's if you're that's if we allow it.
Correct. Correct. So if you allow it. Your water, your wastewater, your streets, your part, you know, everything is going to be taxed.
I mean, I really truly don't have a problem with short term. Like if you have family come to visit and they've got a big motorhome, which has happened to us. They have to go stay in a hotel because they're not allowed to stay in a motorhome. I really don't have a problem with somebody parking family next to their house for three months. I wouldn't want anybody at my house for three months. So that's normally that came up.
That's fine, Tom.
I like my family.
In in a distance. Okay, so enlighten us. You were around here then. Give us the history of the fourteen day permit that used to have.
And see, that's what college girl, that's what they're saying. So. Granted, I I understand a family um permit option, but then it's like, okay, is it a permit? They need to apply um.
And I think.
What kind of standards do you put in there for your water, your sewer?
And I think it should have to, if you want to have somebody on your property, I don't have a problem with it as long as it's a legitimate RV hookup, not extension cords and hoses run across the field. If it's a plug in on a pole with water and a sewer outlet, I really don't have a problem with it if you want to park your Brett family next to you for three, four months.
But then what happens? What happens then with the connections?
Yeah, what about your STCs? So you have this.
But that that's what I mean, though. I don't have. I have a problem with permanent. I'd say I I'd be willing with three to four months and then and it has to be a legitimate RV that can actually start up and move.
Who's gonna spend some thousand dollars putting an electric home sewer?
But there has to be some sort of, I mean, you can't build a house without it complying to code. Most of these RVs are garbage to begin with. At least the only thing we can really control is the actual hookup.
Or do you put a make and model at, you know?
Like a year.
You know, we have a fire, our fire chief goes down to Arizona for eight months and in his place, it's ten years. Granted, you may have a ten, twelve year old RV, could be far nicer than someone's. Newer. I mean, it's all.
The South Cal period two is probably the best case scenario. I mean, brand new.
The drills, I mean.
Vehicles. Travel. That's best case scenario. You're not gonna, I mean. My opinion. The majority are not going to look like that.
No.
But then again, getting to if you do a permit. Do we then put on that? I mean, they are required before final approval to get the necessary building permits because you get into your electrical. Okay, so you allow it. It starts a fire. It spreads to Tom's house next door.
Well, and RVs are notorious for catching fire because they're using, you know, isolator blocks, those old RVs especially. They heat up, they catch on fire. I personally have them to catch on fire.
And there's been several just in local in the news recently.
They're built lightly and cheaply.
Well, and we try to explain, you know, when we gave the second report information to councils, like you build a house and if you want to put in a propane tank. They have distance from the house. They have requirements. They expect it. Well.
RVs.
And RV, it's it's right there because it's made for temporary. It's not.
Yeah.
So there are, I mean, just little things that.
Like I said, I don't really have a problem with short term, but they're not really designed to be lived in.
Well, and that's why if you go short term, you. It's almost you kind of keep it self-contained.
Yeah.
Um, so there is.
Making a renewable thing every three months. You know, at least that way you know there's some sort of checks and balance to it rather than just coming in and getting a blanket approval and. Next thing you know, it's five years later and an RV is burnt down and nobody's, you know, extension.
Well, to use charts and additional STC fee though. So you have.
See, I don't know.
So that's the thing on South Calipoya, you got four families there.
Could we do it where you have a certain time limit? And if you stay longer than that, at that point, it's going to be considered a semi-permanent dwelling and we could start charging STC charges?
Well, and the staff time is another, I mean.
Well, see, that's the thing is I don't really want it to be something where you have to jump through a lot of hoops just to have family come and visit. But then on the other hand, I really don't want people living in RVs.
Well, that's my.
All over town.
Fourteen days or something.
Yeah.
Forty years. Fourteen days, if you're living in fourteen days, it's pretty much it for going black and gray time.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's me.
That's what I say. The only way I'd allow it, I mean, uh, me personally, is if it was a true legitimate RV hookup with sewer hookups.
Yes. That's what I think, yeah.
What, Norm?
I think if they stay beyond a certain period of time, then yeah, we should charge STCs. But I think, you know, there should be.
You can have full, full hookups and have. Um, permits for all each of the hookups. You're gonna have the water out there. So you're gonna have plumbing. You're gonna have a sewer hookup. So it needs to be a. True, honest. Sewer connection because you're connecting to the sewer system. And you have the electrical. You have to have the correct. Uh, plug for that. And at the same time, uh, is the house meter. Does it have enough room in it for that additional fifty ounce of service? So that that permit will. You know, solve a lot of that. Then you just need to go from that to a. Uh, fourteen day or fifteen day permit. That's over the counter, you know, once you have all the other things in place. Uh, if somebody's going to come to your house. Uh, you would just need to go down and get a permit. Over the counter. Um, show that, you know. Somewhere on. The city records that will show that you have. A legal uh RV hookup site there for someone. And each time they go to use it, they would just need to come in and get a permit for it.
Yeah, it seems like that. It's almost like if you do it a fourteen day. Um, you know, like family camping type. You do pay the one time SCCs. You go through the permits, you have it. So the next time. You don't have necessarily the SCC fees, but you still say it's been six months and you have. My niece coming and she's gonna stay there. And do it again. You don't pay the SCCs, but you still have to go through, like you said, an application process.
Yeah, just so it knows. That that motorhome is. Legal to be there for that period of time.
Yeah.
Well, and I think Norm's right, though. If you make the. The actual legitimate RV hookups a requirement. You're gonna have to get a permit. An electrician is going to come out and tell you that, you know, your panel doesn't have enough capacity to hook an RV up here.
Yeah.
At that point, it's all moot. Because they can't. But in some ways, that is a check and balance, you know, to keep people from doing crazy. That doesn't mean.
The first one, but then say the family, you know, they just, once you have everything inspected the first time.
Yeah.
Then it's just going to be this stay.
Yeah, a revolving.
Yeah, a permit to keep staying or what.
But I think a permanent real hookup should be a requirement if. We're even gonna go down this route.
If you have a permanent hook up, you need to charge the STCs.
Okay.
Well, then, you know, you have other jurisdictions too. Not only your water sewer connections and electrical. You're required to have public sanitation for your trash.
You gotta have an address to that?
Well, not an address because the house, you know, will have to be, you'd have to be on a, say, it's probably the house or if we decide industrial or commercial. A business, but you know, some jurisdictions, if they do allow it, it's like you don't have any outside storage. You have trash to pick up. You have, I mean, there's, it's to keep. Clean and organized. It's not. Just let's have this trailer and then. Keep storing and accumulating stuff where, you know, like the Hastings Village. Look.
And I think it should be one hundred percent on your property.
Oh.
If you want to do it, that RV has to be on your property. Yeah.
The setbacks.
And parking. Because you take, you know, once you put that RV in the driveway, where's all the cars gonna go? Out in the street, then the streets are gonna be hard to.
RVs. Or visual clearance and. Correct. But setback.
RV, yeah, needs to be twenty feet setback. They're completely out of public driveway.
Yeah.
And then you have the issue. Let's say that you took South Calipoya and put it over here somewhere on. Wherever, Grovel, whatever. You've got three more trailers there. You add six more vehicles. You're gonna have an issue with it.
Yeah, so then say you limit residential. Besides, you know, you limit residential to one. And if you want to even go commercial industrial, do you say two, three?
Yeah, because I really don't want to say no because I think there really is a need for it. And honestly, I think there's going to be a bigger need here in the near future.
But is a short term going to solve anything?
Exactly. So I think.
And keep in mind, we do have the accessory dwelling unit that we did allow up to eight hundred square feet.
You can have a site-built house.
Yeah, you can have like the miniature guest house. Um, so that ability is there. So they're gonna. And that can be tied into your existing services. Um, or you can pay the SCC and have a separate connection.
Um, and that you could get your address. You could sign with a stick bill. You go through your building permits, everything, and it's. You have that little guest house.
I agree with that. There's permanent, you know, separate hookups. I don't see a problem with being a permanently.
Yeah, as long as it's on your property, it's. Hooked up correctly. And it's not there for more than a year. I don't have a problem with it.
You started at fourteen days, three months, and then you're to a year.
Well, you you see what I'm saying? I mean, there has to be some sort of control to it. But if it's just somebody living in an RV for a year for you with. Extension cord and strung out across the grass field. Yeah, I have a big problem with that.
Well, and see, and that's where you have Springfield. Who they didn't go through the full code of amendments. They just did this list of temporary. We will revisit it. Say, we're gonna allow this through this process, but I mean. There, I mean, this is their flyer with their guidelines and it has to go through the permit. Um, a permit, but they're already six months in and they're gonna start revisiting it to see if they actually want to fully go through. With having something in.
Well, it seems like a lot of people really don't want RVs in town, but I see, you know, a real.
We haven't got the question. One A, I guess.
Yeah, just needs to be done in such fashion.
Well, and then monitoring is.
Jump pile, yeah.
So monitoring is gonna be the other issue. We have one compliance officer. Um, you know, we do the land use portion, but um. When it comes down to the RVs right now, it is one compliance officer.
Let's use a scenario. So I had one parked up above our. Put on my property, but. Okay, this thing was probably thirty four. Probably nineteen seventy. Had it been tagged. It had a plywood door. It had a house on it. I mean. There has to be some kind of guideline. I mean, if this is, there has to be.
Well, and at the same time, I mean, putting. A a year on it is hard too because someone may have a nineteen eighty five that is in great condition. And then who's going to be responsible? Say, yours is junk. Yours is good.
Well, I think it's tough though, because I think what you said is exactly right. The RVs aren't built to last.
No.
So I I think.
They're not even meant to live it.
Yeah, I I think putting a year on it is a good idea. I mean, it especially, I see what you're saying. I mean, they deteriorate pretty quickly. I mean, I.
Especially not being covered or.
Right.
Care.
Yeah, I have a twenty twenty and it's starting to look faded already. So I. It it, I mean, they 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 can deteriorate pretty.
I lived in more for a year when I said, I have a park ranger and I had to turn. Keep my firm enough of them as far.
Yeah, and it's it's expensive to upkeep, to keep them nice. So I think that here would be a good thing.
They're they're really not designed to be lived in. They're like, like.
I'll say some of them are and uh. I've looked at the paint job here.
It.
This is.
Living the high life.
This coach is. This coach is a two thousand four.
Oh, wow.
Wow.
It's got ninety-seven thousand miles on it. And we live in here probably six months out of the year.
Hmm.
I mean, the, if you get high-end coaches. That are actually older, the older ones are better than the new ones. And last year when we were in Alaska, that's what we found, the older coaches. Went through it last year with no problems at all, the new ones. Had a lot of problems.
And when you say older, how old are you, are you speaking of?
Um. Around the year two thousand is when. Ninety-eight to two thousand fours, two thousand five is when they put out some of the best coaches.
So.
And, and I said, some of the best coaches that, that, you have to go online and see what the high, what they call high-end coaches are. And, uh, like this one's a Safari, it's made by Monaco at the time. Uh, but Safari, uh, Country Coach. Uh, Prevo. Beaver, and my wife's inside listening to us.
She's our audience.
Um, she's the audience, yes, you have an audience of one.
Yeah.
Um, but all those, um. They last better. Uh, where does my neighbor?
They're, they're not really designed to handle. Long-term with inclement weather, because I've got a really nice fit wheel. And you look at the water lines in it, it's little half-inch plastic lines.
Yep.
With, the, the lines are fine, they're pecks, but it's plastic fittings, and every time we get a winner, those plastic fittings crack, we get a water leak, I have to chase it down and fix it.
Yeah.
It's certainly not a cheap fit wheel, so they're really not designed with, for the kind of abuse that a home has. So if you're gonna be living in something for longer than a year, they, in my opinion, it really needs to be a permanent structure.
Well, I think it's also important to remember, with folks that might be using this option, that they're probably not gonna. Be the most wealthy of folks they're gonna have.
Cause there's a reason for it.
Right, and so they're.
Well, I can see the reason, living in an RV while you're building a house.
Right.
And I don't have a problem with that, that's a fantastic way to do it, that, that seems logical to me.
Yeah, I would, if that was part of what we're saying yes to, I would say yes to that.
Yeah. So it's, it's hard to say yes or no, because there's so many.
Variables.
Variables and different situations.
Yeah.
So I don't really wanna say a blanket yes or no, I don't really know how you. Create a solution to it.
And even while building though, say, we were to go forward with, say, while building.
I think within a year, you should be to a point where you're weathered in, you could, you should be able to move in.
And that's the thing, some people. Johnny on it, we're gonna get this house, they don't wanna get in, but then you have people that. Well, I'm doing, I'm saving money, I'm living in my fifth wheel, my RV, but I'm doing everything on my own, so it may be strong out, do you still put a?
Maybe that's an incentive to.
Near permit or something.
But we're gonna ask for extension.
Yeah. Which, and I, if you can do it on a case-by-case basis, I don't see why, it just makes you guys work more.
Don't worry.
This makes more work.
Okay, so. And did you look at the survey results that I sent you today?
Yes.
Okay, so just kinda going through, I think you guys are seeing them for the first time tonight. Um, would you wanna live in, uh, next to a property with people living in an RV, um? Yes, was a hundred thirty-five, no, again, would be.
Eighty percent, yeah.
Yeah, forty thousand ninety-five, well, cause I have people that wrote in.
Well, and is this just an RV alone on a property, or is this an RV on somebody else's property? For that question.
It would be.
Because that.
I live right here, Christie lives next door, and right in our twenty fence, she's got someone living in an RV. So I, when I, on their property, but I wanna be in a neighborhood and have, say, neighbors on both sides. Possibly living in RVs.
So a lot of our complaints that come in are, my neighbors got somebody living in their RV. And they have the house, but like one of them, we had over on the west side of town had one, and it was stair steps, so their lots kinda sat like this. Well, the RV was in the upper lot. And they literally felt like they were getting peered upon because the RV sat so tall and was peering in their back, where. The setback, you couldn't really, didn't have that situation in the house, but. They had it because RV was parked between, in the ten-foot setback between the fence and the house.
Well, if somebody's gonna be living in it, even for part-time, it should meet all the setback requirements.
Hmm.
And I think a lot of the lots that we have in the city are gonna be hard to meet that.
Yeah, especially city lots.
Yeah, in subdivisions and stuff, it's gonna.
Yeah.
Well, then, I mean. Even if we were to change our code and do a temporary or however we do it. Take a neighborhood that has HOA. Well, granted, the city may say, yes, it's okay, but. You, civil, civil, yeah, your HOA may not, and that becomes a civil issue where. Where we could tell you, you could have a manufactured home on your property, well, you may have CCNRs or HOA that says no.
Yeah, I don't see an HOA allowing it anymore, you know.
And that's probably, I mean, in my mind, that's why you create HOA, because you want standards, you wanna live in a neighborhood that has these standards. Um, moving on. Should RVs be required to meet design, certain design criteria? For criteria, so this is the year make model appearance, but also it gets into your parking requirements, your setbacks, your paving, so our design standards that we have right now. If you were to build a house, you, you have to have paved parking, you have to meet your setbacks. Um, those sort of requirements, which I think you guys have all agreed to. And I think. Or. Yeah, sixty-two people skipped this. And. And a lot of people, even the handwritten ones skipped it, they, I mean, they just crossed out, no, it's like anger. No, like, it's not me. Um. And if you're interested in reading or seeing more of the others, we could definitely. Follow us. Um. Be cleared up, cause it looks like trash, mobile, otherwise they don't care. You know, so then again, that goes into. You know, everyone has a different opinion of what's nice, what's junk.
Yeah, then you're relying on, you know, what's someone's opinion of.
Yeah.
What it looks like.
Yeah, in my opinion of something, and that's what I'm explaining to people, you know, people call and complain about. A person on the street has a yard that has XYZ in it, and it's like sadly, I can't, we can't enforce what they do in their yard. If they wanna have. Say, their kid's stuff out in the front yard and that's their prerogative, it's not us to judge what they do.
Yeah.
So the number five, should you be allowed to live in an RV temporarily, so this is where we got to the question about time. Um. None was the three hundred nineteen, fourteen days, sixty-nine, thirty, fifty-one, and then it just goes down from there.
Yeah.
We did have some others, um, I think a lot of those others were, I think, getting to the family, like you have a short term.
Yeah, I'd like to see like a fourteen day, if you just have family visiting, all the same rules apply, has to be on the property setback, but. You know, you should be able to have family stay in their trailer or their RV for a couple of days.
You know, then that, that one, it depends on the individual's needs, so. Who's gonna be the one judging their needs, so everyone has a different need.
I think that's important too, is to separate those possibilities, stay or live.
Yeah.
Am I a, am I a gaster, am I a permanent resident, does, yeah.
I'd be worried with the tenant landlord laws, get into it, if I was the homeowner.
See.
But that's just, that is where my mind goes.
We can protect some people that way, if, you, you know, if you end up making it a permit, it has to be at the, whoever's living there has to be there at the permission.
And they have to sign the application.
They both have to sign the application, and I think that would be a good way to protect homeowners and the city. Cause if you make it so, if you have somebody coming and staying for a period of time, you have to have. Your permission on file.
The homeowner has to do the application, signing.
Yeah. So homeowner can come in and basically revoke it from the city at any point in time, saying, I don't want these people here anymore.
Or I didn't sign the application or.
Well, right there. Like I said, it's, I mean, it says, no timeframe, rent is too high, I mean, I agree with you, I think people are gonna take advantage of it, and, so, I mean. And I'll hear, part, part of the trailer here returns to him by the pot, I don't know.
We already had someone that called last summer, bought a house in town and they wanted to know if they could rent an, as an Airbnb, and they were.
We. Just looking, Airbnbs, but the found, found, there are people renting them in town.
We had somebody call, remember when they originally called, when they came to town and wanted to know if they could have an Airbnb? Assuming it was the house, because they just said, they identified they just bought the property, that was the question, that was the answer, moved on. All of a sudden, the ad came up and it was brought to our attention that they were renting an RV as the Airbnb, the house was not the Airbnb.
And they said, well, the city said we can do it, and we didn't need permits, it's like, well, going back to the email correspondence, like, well, I guess shame on. Me, for not stating is it the house? But.
But they want.
They were tricking. Now, and some people, yeah, I mean, I do understand rent mortgages, everything is high. It's just. Sadly, it's our world we all live in, we all.
That's gonna do worse.
And our last question, do you live? Do you live at the city limits, the majority? End up being five hundred seventy with the ride-ins and then seventy-eight, and then nine people skip the question. I'm sure why. I don't know, we, some people don't know, what, if they do or not. Well, that is true. So. You guys want to look at all the others, we could definitely.
We're just for better recommendation to council, right?
Not at this moment, for right now.
We're just gonna keep thinking about it.
Thinking about it next, um, Wednesday, the twenty-fourth is our open house from five to seven in here, um, public is invited, it was set up by all the news media today. Um, that will be having an open house regarding this, and being able to answer questions, and I think we're gonna fire police. Hopefully, someone from wastewater water, we will be there, um.
That's a public, or true.
Yeah, and so we just, uh, we encourage a couple of, or all, you know, three norms, obviously not gonna be here, but, uh, we just can't have a quorum. There will be a couple city councillors there as well, but I think it would be important for you guys to hear the feedback, the concerns. Um, also to help consider in the recommendation really forward, so. If anybody would like to, um, just kinda let us know, so.
Next one's saying, from parts, parts is Tuesday.
Okay, I was gonna say, I thought we were doing it first.
Yeah, you gotta be there.
Tuesday and then that was.
I even put it in the bell.
Look at you, Tom.
And we're.
You've said today.
You get so special. I'm blocked, I am blocked.
Only because it gave me that option when it popped up, it said put in schedule, so I hit play.
I'm gonna send calendar invites all the time.
Yeah, and I guess, you know, just kinda having these questions, this discussion. Think about it, write down kind of your thoughts, so when we revisit this next month. You know, it's not fourteen days to three months to one year, you're like, I'm good with sixty days.
You feel like that you got an honest response on those survey monkeys, or do you feel like you didn't fully understand the question or read it all?
I feel that people, based on the verbal feedback that we were receiving, um, some people were a little confused on.
Yeah, that's what I was.
Well, and I think with the whole neighborhood, the whole homeless thing, that kind of.
They're bleeping into each other.
Yeah.
Well, and it kinda blew up when we were in. Like the first week of this, and so then people started mixing it and. And the homeless camp, that is completely, I mean, state government, state laws, the city's required. Has nothing to do with the RVs, but, I mean, but you see them because they get dragged, they get, they're not supposed to be there, so what happens, they drag them? And just leave them.
So.
Well, and this is pretty typical of what you're gonna find, it was the same thing I was used to seeing on the city council, when I was on city council, we got six hundred and thirty-eight people out of eight thousand people in the city that voted.
And that's.
And you're trying to get the ones that are pissed off every time.
Well, I think next week.
Yeah, those.
No.
Cause you guys will be able to explain, mo- most people will hopefully be listening next week, and so they'll be able to fully understand, it may not, it may, the, the fire may die down just a little bit, just.
Well, and so, like Jamie said, the homeless, so there was the, and some of you may be familiar with the, um. The Hawthorne prob, the trip to Hawthorne that, um, that, I'm gonna say Unqua Hart, but our city manager. Was utilizing the term we, because he's been working with a nonprofit organization as far as. Looking at a property to do transitional housing, well, things kind of got flipped upside down, turned inside out. And we had literally standing room only, and it was two and three rows thick of standing room, and all the seats were full, chairs were brought in. And we had this kind of a public forum, just so everybody could get it out there. And this kinda went out. At the same time that blew up, and so it. Yeah, it did, it wasn't pretty, and then a lot of those people came to the following city council meeting as well.
I've learned from experience, city of Sutherland is very reactionary instead of proactive.
Yeah.
Well, and so as part of the RV situation with the complaints arising and whatnot, and knowing that housing need is always being spoke of and. If needed, we've been low on our residential lands for a very long time.
Oh, I just mean people.
No, no, no.
When they hear something, most of the time, it's blown out of proportion, and they get pissed and shows up to yell without knowing what's going on.
But we're, and that's why we're trying to keep this completely separate from like the homeless, because this is more. Down that.
This is about, yeah, this is about housing, not at all.
Not necessarily your tiny homes and, you know, cheap rent and stuff.
But then on that same spinoff of that, maybe we, we start looking at amending our code again, I know we just went through it. You too, I think we're on it, um, we, we have minimum requirements. For dwelling size, so maybe we need to revisit that and go and maybe put in. Some jurisdictions have clu- uh, cottage clusters where you have, say, it's almost like an apartment's. Complex style of property, but you have, say, nine hundred square foot house, everyone has a joint parking area, but you have. Your own individual, say, nine hundred.
Isn't that kinda what they were doing down there, but I can never remember the name of it, it's called, Tim's Court, yeah, yeah.
That's shifted in different, let's refer someone in Cottage Grove.
Oh, yes, it's just normal houses in a mall.
Kind of, yes.
Okay.
Um, but no, um, and let's get back to the permitted, no, and so in Cottage Grove, if you take the first exit and head up the ninety-nine, oh, highway, I think. There is actually a place, um, I drove in it one time, I thought this is kinda interesting, because you literally drive in like you're gonna go into an apartment complex. And the house is spaced out, sidewalk, you know, but they have, um, a parking area, so it would be one homeowner, like a manufactured home park, but instead, you have. Houses, single-family dwellings, but maybe eight hundred, nine hundred square feet, say, we wanna do a small garage with it, or each of them have a little shed, but. It would be, say, if I own five acres in the city and I wanna do this, it would be an option. Where right now, we're limited.
Yeah.
Cause we don't have something like that, or it would be going back to the accessory dwelling unit where, um, you have room. You can meet all the design standards and you wanna build an eight hundred square foot ADU.
So these are just some options that we want you to be thinking about as, you know, okay, take the development code that we have today, we could be looking at amending that, and maybe the recommendation is to not move forward or change anything with the RVs. Let's reevaluate things in our code to. Let's reevaluate things in our code to help situations like these. Or maybe it's you go through and we kinda take, beat up the RV thing a bit, and it may be, it takes several workshops before we get to a consensus to make a recommendation to city council. It's not something that we know that will happen overnight, but the city council has tasked the process. And so that's what we're beginning. If you guys want to take longer to kind of hash this out, that's okay. We just want to help, be here to help, kind of guide, direct, take the public input. Because that public input was also very important to people. And so we can definitely get out there additional information on code updates of what we can do. Um, that may help, and maybe some will probably feel it might help, some will probably feel like, well, I can't afford that either, I don't wanna go down that road, so.
I think by giving people options, though. Then the city's not being real restrictive, but they're being restrictive in so much as, you know. If you wanna do this, you need to do it this way, we're not saying, no, you can't do it.
Have we beat this one then?
Gives you something to think about.
And I can give you guys, um, I don't know if I have enough copies here, but kind of um, Cottage Grove has a fourteen day, I think it was fourteen days, Springfield with their temporary guidelines. Actually pretty good, I don't know, I could run over and make copies if you want them.
And I, did we send that staff report that had all the information?
I think.
We already sent that.
And maybe your March, um, information packet, and I already sent it to had what we took to council in February, which included that. But if you don't have a printer or something, or don't wanna print it, definitely make these copies and mail you guys a hard copy, or leave them at the front desk, and have you pick them up. If you like, when are you back, Norm?
The second week of June.
So you'll be back for June's meeting?
Yes.
Good deal. So the next thing on the agenda is the activity report.
Has everybody read?
Everybody read the activity quarter, and have any questions? Especially about Port Spahn since Brian's here. Construction starting, when's it starting?
June fifth.
On which part?
It will start on the southeast corner first. Because we have not finalized, or do not have the signature for it, but we're expecting it by the end of the month. Project should be completed by the end of October first week.
What else does that entail?
Six thousand square feet, traditional parking, RV overflow. Um, it will have four eighty accessible restrooms, three pavilions, inclusive play area. It will complete the one point seven mile path around Port Spahn. That point nine miles that is left, um, four hundred, then you'll need to, that will be boardwalk to help minimize the impact of the wetlands, and if you guys remember on the west side, how in Port Spahn, there's two Blackberry Islands. Those two islands will be removed for the wetland enhancement. That material will be placed up there, kind of like west side of there. Um, we'll have a wetland consultant onboard to make sure that's all done correctly. Anything?
The turtle crossings, we're gonna direct turtles and tell them which way to go.
Yes, are we gonna make crosswalks? Can we paint crosswalks?
Yeah.
Like they're gonna be able to read the signs.
But we'll start there in that southeast corner. Um, we do have temporary access from the county right there, where it was. We're trying to keep the equipment off of the current parking lots, we don't have any negative impact there.
But during construction, obviously, that parking lot will be closed, so the parking, awful one thirty-eight.
The city had moved forward a couple months ago and ordered almost all the inclusive play, but not the boardwalk. The restrooms, pavilions, just to make sure that they were here on time for the construction. So you're gonna take the two little islands out, not the two that you see there.
Go and zoom in, go which area?
It's on the west side.
Actually, I can get rid of that water if you want.
That's okay, I just, so the big ones, that one. Is that a natural pond, or is it bed or something? That log pond, it's an old log pond, fifties. Um, it's been completely drained and cleaned, um. I don't remember. When, it was two thousand eight, Adam, when they were gonna do that housing development, they drained the pond, they thought there was. Oh, yeah. They thought all these logs had sunk to the bottom, they're gonna be worth, you know, thousands of dollars in grain.
And that, and a land use application was appealed to Luba, and so they withdrew it.
It will be that big once. And then if we're successful, end of June. If we are successful, the Oregon State Marine Board, there'll be a base three or five degree, which will be about our, uh, issue here. Our site will then. See that little driveway built to right?
And this is our third, our third time of applying, and they have indicated that they've been to the site and have seen how busy it is, and how many um, kayaks and whatnot are in the water, so there, the probability is.
Yay, right.
That's when the wall goes up.
That's when I'm spending a lot of time on the front porch of the Elliot residence.
That will be great.
Um, another terrace lane for improvement will begin here. I don't think they're starting, but they're supposed to be completed by the first, second week of July.
Well, they need to be completed by the end of June, is that how I understood.
It's on the way. And then sidewalk? Where are we at on the extending?
So. So instead of going east this next fiscal year with sidewalk improvements, we will be doing North State and First Avenue along with the, uh, paving improvement behind backside. Those two lots of city block for parking.
So these two.
Yeah, so we'll be coming from the intersection, yeah, right there on the west, yeah, west side.
West side.
Go straight up. Go all the way to first, there you go. So we'll be, the sidewalk will actually stop at the first lot. That whole alley will be paved and improved. Um, those two lots will be paved, and then we'll and instead of going east, this next fiscal year, we're gonna do that.
And then they have lots of interest in the bank building, so the renovation of the bank building is coming along, I think they're starting the roof. If they haven't already, they'll be starting soon, um, and so we'll hopefully get that wrapped up in the next few months, and they have, uh, people who are ready to go in as well, so. That would be exciting. No. Yeah, that was one of the options, but they've got, um, possible tenants that I don't know that I'm at liberty to say at this moment, I know one of them, I don't know the others. And they seem to be ever changing, um, but they have had lots of interest, I've even had phone calls that I've directed their way of interest, so. We're trying to continue, uh, encouraging our facade improvements and business relocation grants through the urban renewal, so.
Are we gonna have those meetings again?
I think you missed the last one or two.
You blocked her.
Get notifications anymore.
You get everything.
Not for those ones.
I didn't do a calendar, and I probably.
I have more time on my hands now, that's the only reason I ask.
Let me fix you right now, let me see if you're bonding. So, yeah, we're staying busy. And were you all here when Brian said that he is retiring, retired, he got demoted?
Just heard, yeah, so Christie's. We already went through process and hired somebody to take Christine's spot.
And she'll start June first?
And she is. I agree, that's it. You're gonna have probably the best, I said to an email today to Business Oregon that I felt that Solo is gonna have the best community development department in Davis County, not the state of Oregon, and the lady at Business Oregon responded that Solo is gonna win. You guys need to know the three ladies that you're gonna have.
So if any of you work with, um, CCD Business Development Group, uh, Coos Turi Douglas is business development group. Uh, Brandy Maderas is the person that hired, so she'll be starting on the first. Pretty sure.
Won't miss a beat when I'm gone.
I'll be back in time.
What?
I'll be back just in time.
Yeah. Do you guys have any other questions regarding the activity report?
Nope.
Public comment.
Public comment, do you have any comments?
Does your wife have any comments?
Are you have any comments? Nope.
Okay. And then commissions.
She says it's getting dark out here.
Is there any commission comments?
Nope.
No thoughts, no questions, no need to happen? Yeah, Music Off Central, though, I mean, just, yeah.
Oh.
At, oh, oh, no, you're past your turn. So, yeah, so I mean, summer months are coming, we have school graduation coming up, and then Music Off Central, we, uh, not we, but the city or agencies have, um, the farmer's market, which moved out of Tractor Supply is going on. Evergreen will soon be opening, um, their business, so that'll be a great asset to the city. Um, Music Off Central will start July, and so Bro Down will also be the middle of July. And then you get Blackberry in August.
My question was gonna be, when are they gonna put the pavilion up?
This cover? So you'll be back for all the fun, Norm?
Yep. We, we planned it that way.
Good. And then if no questions, I guess you can adjourn it.
Okay, we'll adjourn the meeting at, I don't know what time it is, so.
Eight oh one.
Eight oh one. We did it in one hour and one minute. Very good.
Well, have a good rest of your time, enjoy all the music and festivities. And have a safe ride back next month.
Yes, nine hundred miles, and.
Yeah, that's fun, I just did that, we just drove from Scottsdale around, um, I guess, to Flagstaff, and then Utah, and around, and then back home.
That's a good drive.
Yeah, it was very beautiful, a lot of sights between here and there.
Yeah, I'll turn the, turn this a little bit this way, so you can kind of see.
Beautiful, well, enjoy and have fun time.
We will, and, uh, well, I'll, I'll say hi to Brad Paisley for you on, uh, Saturday.
All right, get his autograph.
No, I won't be able to do that.
Okay.
Nope. They have very strict regulations, you can't even get close to them.
Oh.
Yeah, it was really strange, and they, and they signed up to come out here. All the rules and regulations that have to, you have to go, go with, it's like.
I guess you do it to make it happen.
Yeah.
All right, well, have a good evening.
Okay, you guys too, and we'll see you all next month.
All right, thank you for joining.